Okay, looks like I've got seven o'clock, so I will call this evening's meeting of the Planning Commission, July 5th, 2022 to order. Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Mr. Kellum? Ms. Hyde here? Mr. Wagner?
Yeah.
Mr. Brinkley?
Here.
Here. All right, um, you noticed, uh, for those of you in attendance, we do have a new face on the commission, uh, Mr. John Breeden, his term had expired, and, um, we welcome, uh, Neil Kellum to the, uh, to the commission. At this time pursuant to our bylaws, um, we will, uh, elect a new chairperson. Um, at this moment, I will, um, entertain a motion for, uh, a nomination. Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, I would like to nominate, uh, you and the Planning Commission, I would like to nominate Matthew Slater as chair. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Okay. So we will need to do a roll call for that?
Yeah. You have to do a review first.
During the discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion?
I just wanted to bring up, if you do that, then we're gonna have to add another thing to the agenda to now elect vice chair.
Correct, correct. Yes. All right, anybody else?
No.
Mr. Brinkley?
Oh, this is the vote.
Yes. Yes, would you call, roll, roll, roll call the, please?
Mr. Brinkley?
Next thing.
Mr. Kellum? Ms. Hyde? Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Slater?
Hi. Okay, at this moment, um, we will now need to elect a vice chair. I will entertain a motion, uh, for nomination for that position.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, um, have Mr. Wagner serve as vice chair.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion? Barbara, would you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Brinkley?
No.
Mr. Kellum?
Yes.
Ms. Hyde? Mr. Slater?
Hi. At this time, um, we will review and adopt the, uh, tonight's meeting agenda. We have an amended agenda before us that placed the election of the new chair, um, in front of us, uh, to this, um, number three position on our agenda. So, uh, is there any other changes, um, any amendments that are needed in the, in addition to what we have in front of us?
We should have adopted the meeting agenda first, but that's beside the point.
If I may, Mr. Chair, um, the planning administrator actually made some changes to the agenda, and one of those was the election of the officers, um, to be made up, and then the other amendment to the agenda was to add, item 9A, which was the planning and zoning six-month work plan, um, that the planning administrator, Mr. Ashcroft, will be presenting to the planning commission.
Okay.
It still doesn't matter who brought it to their attention. I mean, he doesn't have any more power over the board than anybody else. It still has to be put in the agenda and approved before you can do it, but still, that's beside the point. It's, uh, not gonna raise it much, just thinking, yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I'll make a motion that is the review and adoption of the meeting agenda, that we include the motion for vice chair to have been included after the fact and approve, um, the rest of the amended agenda.
Do you have a second? Second.
Ms. Hyde? Ah. Mr. Wagner?
Hi.
Mr. Brinkley?
Hi.
Mr. Kellum?
Hi.
Hi. Next on our agenda is the review and approval of minutes. We have, uh, June 7th, our regular meeting, uh, minutes, and the June 23rd work session, uh, regarding the subdivision zoning ordinances. Has everyone had a chance to review those? Any discussion changes? All right, I'll take a motion to, uh, to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion to approve both the June 7th and the June 23rd minutes as written.
Second. Second. All right, that's approved. Um, next on the agenda is a public comment period. Uh, speakers will have an opportunity of three minutes per individual or five minutes per group on non-public hearing matters. At this time, we will open up the public comment period. Anybody who mind? Seeing that there's no speakers, um, for the public comment period, I will close the public comment period. Next on the agenda, old business, um, subdivision and zoning ordinance. Um, we worked, we talked about this at our last work session. Uh, we have an upcoming joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors on July 20th, um, which will get, uh, some more discussion regarding these, uh, these items of what we tried to do was, um, take a list of, of some issues that have come up throughout the course since we've approved the, um, the zoning ordinance and, uh, addressed these issues. These are the main ones that Sheri and her team have had a, um, yeah, have come across in their, um, in their dealings with, with normal business day-to-day, and so we are addressing these first. This is not the end-all-be-all of the zoning ordinance changes, I'm sure, so, but this is the first, uh, bite-sized portion that we decided to, uh, to undertake. So, uh, do we have any further discussion regarding the subdivisions and ordinances so far? No, good.
Would you like me to get this? The first section, um, is, are actually the ones that you all had agreed to, and you just have requested the wording, um, of the ones that you had agreed to, so I can go through the wording that was come up with, that you have requested.
Okay.
So the first one is, um, section 86 dash 136, EPO transportation corridor overlay district, and number six, building exteriors. And so the piece we added, so right now it says building exteriors, building exteriors visible from US Highway 360 or State Highway 30, um, the portion we added shall consist of brickstone or pretty plank siding unless approved by the planning commission prior to zoning approval. Previously, it had said approved by the zoning administrator. So the portion in red is what we had, um, added. So we removed approved by the zoning administrator, and we put the materials that, um, they would be approved administratively, and if it was not those materials, then it would be approved by the planning commission prior to zoning approval. So if you're okay with that one, um, that was the wording that we had developed. The next one is in Article 8, um, under agricultural uses, section 86, 151.1. And that whole section for private stables and other facilities used for keeping horses or livestock shall be at least 100 feet from all property lines and at least 300 feet from adjacent property owners' residence. Private stables and other facilities used for keeping horses or livestock must be located on a lot in the agricultural or residential zoning district. That is at least five acres in size. On a five-acre lot in the agricultural or residential zoning district, there must be, or there may be up to a total of two of the following animals: horses, ponies, cows, or a total of five of any of the following animals: sheep, goats, swine, llamas, or alpacas. For every acre in addition to the first five acres, there may be a total of one additional horse, pony, cow, or a total of three sheep, goats, swine, llamas, or alpacas. This limitation does not apply to lots ten acres or larger and agricultural conservations or any district. Poultry including fowl ducks and other birds kept for the production of eggs for domestic consumption specifically, including rooster feed, guinea fowls, turkeys, and peafowl may be permitted in the R1 suburban residential zoning on parcel less than five acres in size, provided there are no more than 10 birds per parcel as a by right use. However, birds must be kept in a coop and shall not be permitted to free range. In order to have more than 10 birds and/or roosters, eat guinea fowls, turkeys, or peafowl, a conditional use permit shall be required. Any coop housing, the birds must be located a minimum of 100 feet from the adjacent property line and at least 300 feet from any adjacent property owner's residence. No coop or pen housing of birds shall be located in the front yard. So this was excluded, uh, from the zoning ordinance prior, so this is, um, what we have talked about putting back in the ordinance.
I have a question, if I may.
Yeah.
If I'm reading this correct, 100 feet from all property lines, so typical five-acre lot is 300 feet wide. So 100 feet from each property line, you could only have a pasture in the middle 100, 100 feet?
I'm sorry, I got one more question.
If I'm reading this correct, it says, keeping of horses or livestock shall be 100 feet from all property lines and at least 300 feet from adjacent property owners' residence. So on a five-acre lot that was 300 feet wide, you'd only have the 100 feet in the middle of it where you could actually keep livestock, if I'm reading that correctly.
But, excuse me, but wasn't that intended under the old ordinance to be for stables? Pens and stables?
Not the pasture itself.
Not the pasture itself?
So it's 100 feet from the property line, but it's 300 feet from an owner's, an adjacent property resident. So if you've got, let's say, depending on, it depends on the width of the parcel. So it's, it's only a 300-foot wide parcel. So it would be 100 feet, 50 probably, I mean, I'm trying to understand your question, I guess. So, I mean, you would have 50 feet basically on both sides, in addition to where you could put it.
Well, you, your typical five-acre lot, and we're starting with the five-acre lots, but your typical five-acre lot in the county, because it has to have 300-foot road run, it's just typically 700 and plus feet deep. So if you have to be 100 feet from each property line, and, and I'm, have, I guess, the same question, Mr. Wagner, is that the housing, like the, the stables, the barn? Or can the pasture be within that 100 feet setback?
It's just on the property line. So if your, if your left property line is here, it's 100 feet from that property line.
For the, for the stables, it would be for what houses the animals, or would it be?
Yeah.
Would it apply to the pasture as well?
Right, for the structure itself.
The structure itself. So any structures would have to be 100 feet from it.
For the structure.
So we could possibly add that to it, but obviously, we, we all were a little confused on that one, so.
My question would be, what defines other facilities? Is a feeding trough and, you know, or a feeding den or some sort, you know, would that be considered another facility or another structure? Do you have any, do you have a list of what other structures would be?
Right, back to the description of that commission.
Anything else?
But that's something we don't want to add to, we can add to it now.
Yeah. Recommendations, anything?
Let's, let's go with, that's the private stables and other facilities used to keep them, horses or livestock shall be at least 100 feet. So, yeah, that, you know, says that, it was kind of confusing, but I think that, that wording is in there, but, but we, we need to be sure we're not talking about pasture land, because within the pasture land, the pasture can go to the property.
Right.
Can we add in some wording that would indicate that this does not apply to pastures or grazing land?
Only if we need to define other facilities, um, because that might be questionable as well, so, um, I think we just want to be clear. So if we want to have staff go back and revisit that, as to whether those, that wording still applies or whether we should define it further.
I think we should define it further, for sure. I'd be, uh, I'd like to see what the staff would recommend for, for that as far as being more specific on the what other facilities means right there.
Okay, so the next one is in section 86 dash 438 under exempt subdivision. Under, um, number C, every lot above an existing zoning change that was made, um, is adding the word primary, um, or secondary highway. So right now, it just says secondary, so just the word primary was added. Um, and same section, number two, any further subdivision of a previously zoned lot pursuant to this exemption shall constitute a major subdivision, except for family divisions. So that wording is, except for family divisions, and shall be subject to all applicable governing ordinances and requirements.
Any discussion there?
Under section 86 dash 456 cluster subdivision, number two, um, and we had this discussion last time, so it's to a number of lots. There really wasn't any change, it's just, um, making it a little clearer when Sheri and I were discussing it after the conversations we had last time. So under number of lots, we added the verbiage, and calculating the total number of lots allowed, cluster subdivisions are allowed one lot per acres. Because it was, right. So it wasn't changing the numbers, because when Sheri and I looked at it over and over again, um, we weren't clear of what the intent was. So we just added that, and calculating the total number of lots allowed, so that it's very clear. When you're calculating it, it's one lot per five acres, but then when you come into the lot area, the lot area is different. So if you all are okay, we just added that verbiage. And what did change within lot area, um, for, if the lots are served by public water or public sewer, that 60,000 square feet, I'm sorry, and 60,000 square feet if the lot is not served by either public water or sewer. Previously, it was 30,000, so the planning commission made the recommendation for 60,000 square feet. So that was the change under cluster subdivision.
Mr. Chair, may I? I have one comment on that. If it goes 60,000 square feet, you can only get, uh, three lots, per five acres. So I think we need to go back to the 40,000 or 50,000 square feet.
Any else in session? Yeah. Well, the ori, the original, the original ordinance was 15,000 water and sewer, 20,000 water or sewer, and 30 with, with neither. And the, the spirit of the cluster zoning was to cluster the houses together and try to preserve 80% of the land and the green space. And the idea was, if, if several people did it in a row, you'd have large areas of green space that you preserved. So I think going to the, the 60,000 square feet, uh, may be a little excessive. I think the 30,000 square feet, trying to get it well and set it on 30,000 square feet is probably trying to put too much on 30,000 square feet. So I think maybe the, the 40,000 would be a good, where we'd still meet the spirit of the ordinance, but also do something that's practical.
Yeah, we, we definitely walked from back and forth on this one quite a bit in our work session. And, and the, and, and we, we didn't want to get too dense, um, right there, but, um, I mean, is everybody okay with 40,000 square feet, uh, in that regard, to, to keep it where we can get a little bit more lots into that non-cluster subdivision?
I, I have one more, um, just some clarification back on the original part. The way it's been interpreted in the past, if, if you had a 100 acres, you could get one lot per every five acres you had. So essentially, you could get 20, 40,000 square foot lots. And then someone just said the number of lots per five acres that you had, that's two different things there.
Well, that, the, the one lot per five acres is what governs that. The, um, the minimum lot size, uh, basically says that's the minimum size lot you can have, but you can only have, if you got, if you got 100 acres, you can only have 20 lots. So the minimum lot size, you have to take out for streets and other recreational areas or whatever you might have within that 30-acre cluster. So you would have 20 lots per 100, for 100 acres total, but you'd have 20 lots in, in the 30-acre, well, cluster. And, but you can have a, you can have a minimum lot size of only down to 15,000 square feet if you've got water and sewer. But it leaves some room in there still. It doesn't, no word, it doesn't compact a bunch of houses together too tightly. It gives you some room for, for reasonable lot sizes. If you're looking at, um, if you're looking at, um, one lot per five acres, uh, you could have with, for 15,000 square feet, you could have a 100-foot frontage, and you could have a setback of as much as 30 feet for the house and still have about 3,800 square feet, or no, it's a little, about 8,000 square feet left for building a house in any of the minutes.
I think the one thing was the same with your home. So the ordinance right now says cluster subdivisions are allowed one lot per five acres, which you're saying that wasn't the original intent.
Well, I think the original, the way the cluster came out, and it, again, it state mandated, you can develop 30% of your land. So I use 100 acres, that's easy math. So you had 30 acres of developable land, and within that 30 acres, take out roughly 25% for your roads. Whatever you had left over, that's, you could get as many 40,000 square foot lots with well-insetment as you could fit within that 30 acres, which that's more lot than the one per, one per five.
One lot per five acres, yeah.
And it, I just, I think that really needs to be clarified, because it is interpreted two different ways, and, and I know it's been a big question over the last year.
I got questions for the board.
It's the difference between the number of lots you can have and the minimum size lots. In, in the regular ordinance, we have a minimum size lot. But that doesn't mean you can't, in a major subdivision, it doesn't mean you can't have two-acre lots or three-acre lots or whatever. But the minimum size you can have is 15,000 square feet or 30,000 square feet with water and sewer. So that it's, you're saying two different things there, and I think the one lot per five acre is what governs how many lots you can have. The other lot just says it's the minimum lot size you can have.
So in reading this, if we have, if we have 20, if we have 100 acres, we have 20 available lots that we can build? And and then whatever public utilities we have governs the size of lots that we.
Well, the, the minimum size.
Right.
One, one other question along those lines that I don't know if it's addressed in here, but again, I, I know it's always been an issue. The, the 70%, if you will, lot that's left over, can there be a house on that lot?
I don't, I don't believe in the cluster subdivision ordinance, it can't. But in the old ordinance, they had a conservation ordinance, then you could have a house on, on the 70, but in the cluster subdivision, I don't think.
And there's a definition for the conservation area that talks about what, what's actually included, um, in that area, and it talks about, what one CBPA talks about open space, but it does not talk about being able to construct a house, um, within that area.
So what typically happens in that situation? In my experience, you end up with basically an orphan parcel of land that no one really owns, maintains, takes care of, and then it becomes, can everyone in the cluster use that piece of property? Can everyone go hunt on that piece of property? Can everyone ride their four-wheeler on that piece of property? Typically, it's worked out better if you could keep that large 70-acre parcel and one person can own it and maintain it and look after it. That took a lot of that area out of it. I just, I know when you have these large parcels, that there's nobody there policing it, it creates a lot of problems.
So if it's what one, let's say, for example, those are normally protected areas, which you can't construct in. Um, if it has RPA buffers in it, again, you can't construct in it, you can't do anything in those areas. Those are protected areas. Um, some people turn it, if it's not one of those areas, some people turn it into a park space that's available to the community. So it just depends on what that particular area is, that's included in that 70%.
So if I recall correctly, the, um, the rendering that Hill Studio put forth when, when they discussed the, um, the cluster subdivisions, and I remember them discussing, uh, hypothetically, a, a farmhouse with, say, 100 acres. There would be a farmhouse still in operation, still operating 70% agricultural land, and then there being a cluster subdivision. So I've, I just wrongly assumed all along that there could be a structure in that conservation area. But you're saying that there, as, as currently stands, there is not.
Farms that they were talking about, I mean, the one that you're referring to, where they were operating the farm, and, um, I'm pretty sure that was the farms that they were talking about. And that's not to say, for that specific situation, like I said, it just depends on what parcel of land we're talking about. If it's a usable space or it's not a usable space.
I guess the question becomes, what would, what would dictate that? If, if someone did a cluster and had 70 acres of, surely on 70- of Shirley on seventy acres, you'd have a couple acres of usable ground where somebody could put a house. Are we saying no matter what the situation, you can't do it? Or is there going to be some exceptions to the rule?
Again, it depends on if there's wetlands or if there's RPA buffers. It just depends on what that land is designated. The intent is to conserve that space.
Okay, so look on page two oh three of the ordinance under conservation areas. It says the conservation area may contain, may contain mass drain fields and their reserve area, but not individual drain fields or the required required yards for individual lots. The conservation area shall be permanently protected and maintained by homeowners association. Which at the time of the final approval of the ordinance for any property as a cluster subdivision, the property owner shall record documents satisfactory to the county establishing ownership and prohibiting further division of the conservation areas. So I think that covers what Mr. Kellum is talking about. It was, it was different in the old ordinance for conservation lots, but not the old ordinance for cluster subdivisions.
Anybody else?
The next one is modifications to front yard regulations. This one has been discussed in quite a bit of detail. And accessory buildings and structures shall not be constructed in a front yard on a lot that is less than five acres. An accessory building may be constructed in a front yard on a lot that is five acres or more, provided that the requirements for front yard setbacks in Article Six, Division Two, Section eighty-six dash one-ten are met, and the size of the accessory structure does not exceed fifty percent of the first floor area of the main dwelling and not located directly in front of the primary dwelling and in conformity with all other applicable provisions of this ordinance.
I'm sure you guys have discussed this a little bit, but is it any provisions in there for waterfront lots? I just, I know that comes up a lot, not only in this county, but other counties. What is the front yard, what is the backyard? And most of your riverfront lots are going to be smaller lots, and most people cannot detract from the view shed would put a dwelling, a second accessory dwelling in what we would call the front yard on the riverfront lot.
That's why we put in the requirement that even though the riverfront or any building has the view in the front, but that can't put the accessory dwelling, they're putting it it's actually in the back of the building, but it's considered the front for the rules. That's what we're seeing. It can't be directly in front. It has to be offset or away, but it meets the requirements so that it doesn't look like some kind of accessory building stuck in front of people's houses.
But there's, it has to be a five acre lot.
Yeah, that's why it says five acres or more. It can't be fifty percent of the main structures. If you have a thousand square foot home, you can only build a five hundred thousand square foot accessory dwelling off-centered from the actual front entrance of the dwelling. But unless you think it's not, to read that, that's what we tried.
I'm just, I'm unclear if it says if you have a two acre lot on the river, can you put an accessory dwelling on that because it's less than five acres?
No, yeah.
So that's the majority of those hats up in town the river.
Unfortunately, yeah.
I will say, all the ones that we've had that have had the situation, they've all been at least five acres or more. The ones with the BCA for a variant, they've been at least five. We've not seen many that's been less than five. They've all been in AC and they've been at least five.
That's just what it's come to. That's because, like he said, most of the lots built before the new ordinance came out, they're all two. All the ones in my subdivision are two. All the ones around me are two. So nobody can build anything because it's less than five acres.
Was the five acre figure, was that because as you get smaller than that, you end up having issues with drain fields, well, you know, that type of thing?
I think it was more because there, the ones that have been patterned in the AC district, so when you go outside the AC district, they are the smaller lots, and that's where you get the complaints from these adjacent property owners that they don't want to see the accessory structures in the front yard area. We've only had one that's gone to the BCA or that I've not approved. There's only been one that I have not approved, that they've requested a shed in the front yard. Where they didn't have the ability to locate it in the back.
And that was a riverfront?
That was not a river.
Not a river. Do you see any reason why a two acre riverfront that has no other option to put an accessory structure other than the front yard? Is there any reason that you can think of why we couldn't change the five acres to a lower number?
You could put something in here. I mean, if you think that, I think you have to be careful when you're saying less than five, that you don't open it up to the R one district, because they're very condensed lots. And the one that went to the BCA was a very condensed lot. And you just don't want to have accessory structures in the front yard in these condensed neighborhoods. So you just have to be mindful of that. Now, if you want to put some verbiage into the ordinance for lots such as that are on the riverfront and don't have the ability to put it in the rear yard, where you make an exception with those lots, I think you can do that.
And that's what I was suggesting, certainly not the interior lot, if you will, but when you have subdivision lots and people have no other alternative, I think there needs to be something in there to give them a path to be able to achieve that on the riverfront lots.
I'd like to see some comments. Is everybody in agreement on that? To have some kind of verbiage in there that indicates if you have a riverfront lot or waterfront lot and that is your option is the front yard that they're able to do.
Of course, it can always go to the BCA for review.
Mr. Chair, I think that we've tried to allow additional abilities more than what the original zoning ordinance shared with these modifications. Certainly, we could ask staff to come up with some additional wording to see if we'd like to change that. But at this time, I'm I'm happy with what they've already come up with and know that the citizens still have the ability to go to BCA if they want an exception. I'm just afraid if you open up that wording too much, it is going to create more of an issue. If there were more people already coming and applying, I could certainly see, you know, adding it at this time. But at best, I would like to see that staff come up with some additional wording to try to help us with that before we make any decisions.
Christine, you want to get with your team then and just see, see what you can come up with? Then we'll discuss it further at the joint meeting and see if an outright change or addition there is warranted.
The next one is under Section eighty-six dash one fifty-four accessory dwelling units. Number three, an accessory dwelling unit that is detached shall be no more than eight hundred gross square feet, the part that was added unless a conditional use permit has been approved.
Mr. Sheriff, Christina, we say unless a conditional use has been approved, do we have a conditional use for accessories?
On certain zoning districts, yes. For the AC district, it's permitted by right. When you go into the RR and R one, a conditional use permit is required for eight hundred square feet and over. But just to clarify. Then we have the Section eighty-six dash two forty-five, can I have it? We added under number two, provide a setback of at least three hundred feet from any residence not on the associated parcel. That went from two hundred to three hundred. Special events and event venues. So these, we went into great detail to talk about the definition of special event. And Sherry had shared with me what the definition, so there was a definition that talked about special events. Made surfaces, fairs, carnivals, festivals, weddings, family reunion or other types of events. And it runs no longer than two weeks, are intended, intended or likely to attract substantial crowds or unlike the customary or unusual, or usual activities general associated with the property where the special event is to be located. And then it also, there was a definition for event venue. And then it went into event venue means a location that hosts affairs, including but not limited to banquet, dinners, parties, weddings the like for up to three consecutive days for which attendance is permitted only by invitation or reservation. And so I didn't quite, unfortunately, in the last meeting, hear the whole conversation since I was via Zoom. But so there was the definition for special events, but you really didn't find it anywhere else in the ordinance. And so there needed to be some clarification for special events. One, because you had some special events that weren't on the permitted use table. And so we just needed to discuss that a little bit more in depth. And then the event venue, which kind of clarifies more, and it's actually further on in the packet on page one fifteen. So we'll get to that portion. And so I'll go for that a little bit more. So that's just to kind of touch on it with this point. The next thing is temporary sales. So under the ordinance, we had the whole portion that talked about temporary sales. And then it was remade, with the update to the ordinance. And so we recommended to put it back in temporary sales. And we talked about this for outdoor sales for the sale of Christmas trees and the like permitted in the B one, B two, and in the AC district. And we remunerated what the approval of the CEP, but not to exceed ninety days. Temporary stands for the sale of fireworks, not to exceed fourteen days per calendar year permitted in the B one and B two. Temporary open air stands for seasonal sales of products raised on the premises permitted in AC, B one, B two, and the N district. And so if you're okay with the temporary sales portion, we'd like, we talked about putting that back in the ordinance.
Any discussion there?
If I could ask a quick question. How do yard sales apply or do they, in reference to temporary stands?
But they do not apply in the ordinance. And they are actually more regulated through either the Commissioner of Revenue or the Treasurer's Office. They're allowed so many per year. And provided they don't go past that, they're not regulated by our office. Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Is that okay for that section before we move on?
Yes.
Right, so the next section we had, and you all had talked about this in quite a bit of detail, is the industrial district. You had talked about, right now, it's just ones in the main district. And you had talked about splitting it off into two different categories, into a light industrial and into a heavy industrial. So what Sherry has done is give you the definitions for what light industrial is, what heavy industrial is. And there's even a category for medium industry. And then following that is the use maker that has a whole category for industrial. So if you still want to take a look at splitting it off into light and heavy, you'll see the entire use category or the whole table of permitted uses. And this was something that we talked about going through the comprehensive plan. That was one of the recommendations that was made to the planer's mission.
I do think that it needed to be included, Mr. Chair, as far as light industry is concerned. And so I do appreciate staff coming up with the definition and including it in the use table.
I agree. I think that as we look to get a higher quality businesses into the county, I think that it's going to be important to have, especially the light industrial definition in there for sure. As far as the heavier industries, we're probably going to be a little bit more limited in that nature. But I think the Hill group also was fairly adamant about making sure we had that that in our tables and as well in our conference plan. Any other discussion? Or discuss?
Yeah, that should be included in future land use map. And that was the idea to put this in the future land use map. Is that correct?
Correct. Ironically, the definitions are already in our ordinance. It would just be a matter of taking the permitted use table and dividing it up between light and heavy industrial and just determining what uses are light and which ones are heavy.
Right now, we just have industrial.
And right now, we just have industrial.
Yeah, I'm in favor of having an additional column in there that would allow us to break that up between the two. We can go back and figure out where things line up at as far as what type of industry it is. Would your recommendation be to have light and heavy, or should we have three? Light, medium, and heavy?
What I've seen at other localities, I actually went back and pulled from Suffolk. We've been there for quite a while, and they just had light and heavy. I think it's just too convoluted if you were to pull three. So I would say just the light and the heavy, and we can pull from some other localities for you. And so you can kind of compare, but normally you look at the definition and kind of some of the industries that you would want to see come into the county and where you would place them. So I think the Hoover could make some recommendations of what kind of businesses to try to attract into the county.
Yeah, I agree with the white and the heavy and exclude the medium. For now, if it ever comes to a point that we have that many questions come up, then we could certainly add it back. But it makes sense to just have the light and heavy.
Is that something you want to have a bundle to make with the board?
Yeah, I think that if, yeah, if you could put that in form for us to discuss with them as well, and that, we'd like to make that change.
We can go back for just a minute to special events and event venues. I think part of your conversation was the fact that special events was not defined anywhere else, other than kind of the definition. Sherry had mentioned, and say, oh, some instances may not be necessarily classified as special events. They are instance if someone were to have a family wedding at their house, based on the current definition. It just has weddings, family reunions, or other types of special events, just based on the definition. So you all may have to help me with what conversations you all had regarding special events, and what you wanted to change in that particular instance. I know we bonded up, but that, it needed more clarification, and where else in the ordinance, it needed to be clarified, other than just the definition where it currently resides. So I think it needs to be clarified a little bit, further than just the definition. When you say wedding, it can be misinterpreted two different ways. Is it a wedding venue? Or is it weddings that someone just had a family wedding, you know, a daughter getting married, or son getting married? Is it, how do we classify that? The whole section of special events kind of was changed and taken out of the current ordinance, from where it was last time. And now we just have event venue.
So we had a specific definition in the old ordinance, or?
For special events.
For special events?
What you have a definition now for special events, and you also have a definition for event venue. But the only reference you have of special event now is just the definition, there's a definition for special events, and you have a definition for event venue.
So are you suggesting we add a section to the ordinance that further discusses that?
That further discusses special events.
Does everybody think about that?
Because your definition of venue talks about weddings.
Yeah, that'll be something we'll need to discuss and figure out how we want that to read.
Not weddings, but two different places.
I do think that we need to add that, more than just in the definitions, and we may need staff's assistance with wording, to make sure that weddings, wedding venue versus family wedding, is clarified, and which, which we want, and which category.
Yeah, and even a family wedding, it might, there might be a, it might not even just pretend to a family wedding, might be somebody getting married that knows someone who has a farm that would love to use their barn or something for it. So I don't, I don't think we should limit it to just family.
Great, I had a question about, would there be any reason to, for either category, to list maximum number of people, and/or how many times events can be held in a year? You know, if it's an event venue, you know, and they're going to have weddings every weekend, for instance, I, you know, that, that's one type of category, but special events, you know, where do you, where do you cross over from, from lead into what you just said? I have a barn that, you know, that would be appealing to weddings, and now I've turned it into, you know, a friend or a family member would like to use it, to now you have additional interest, it doesn't necessarily constitute as a wedding venue that will be used every weekend, but, you know, do we need to specify that? So anyway, that was just my thought, as to whether we need to discuss whether there needs to be a limit on how many times a year, per category, if that even applies.
We, we have an event venue under commercial. But with the white panel that they also put an event venue under residential, and verify the, the name of it, a little bit more, like for a family wedding, or a small event, for one or two days, or whatever.
They figured it's kind of private or public?
Or private.
Or private events for families, or public of the family?
But under residential, rather than under commercial.
You have to be careful with your wording, let's say that from many years of dealing with special events permits. So when you keep it and say private, that's exactly what you mean, that's a private event where the public is not invited. Meaning it's your immediate family members that are included in that event, you're not announcing it to the public, you're not advertising it. So it's just a matter of your verbiage. You're not holding multiple events. You don't have to get into the number of events per year.
Maybe we could establish a more descriptive definition of special event? Maybe that's the way we should go with it, that way we don't, that way we don't have special event, private event, event venue, longer. Yeah, I, I think that's probably where we need to just add some more verbiage to the definition of special event. Anything else?
The last thing we had was the landscape requirements that you all talked about in great detail. So we included what currently King William County has of our landscape requirements, and then what Hanover has as their landscape ordinance, and some pictures that they had as part of that landscape ordinance. And we were going to get into greater detail tonight, we talked about recommendations that you all have, as far as what you wanted to see, to change the current ordinance that we have. And one of the last things that we had was one of the pictures on the trip that Mr. Wagner went out on with Sherry and I, to take a look and see what, some of the requirements, or not the requirements, but what was actually installed in Hanover.
What's?
Was that Hanover? It was Hanover, we were in.
Yes. Christina, what stood out for you, when, when looking at this, as compared to the Hanover?
So what stood out is their insulation requirements certainly are greater than what we have now, were pretty sparse, and what we require as far as our commercial applications. What you'll see in Hanover is, even when it's a newer development that goes in for commercials, you'll see more shrubbery requirement, the tree cannibies are, are here, so even when it's new, you'll see in greater detail than you do here. Now, it, it's not anything substantial that they're requesting, but it doesn't look sparse like it does here. Mr. Wagner will tell you, it looks a whole lot better than some of the things that we require here. So I don't think it's asking a lot, or a whole lot more than what we require now. So they're asking for things in, in the aisles, going into the parking area, along the corridor, their main corridor, going into Hanover, you can tell the difference with their newer commercial projects, the ones that have been there a greater amount of time. So there is a substantial difference. And each of those throughout the county, take a look at the difference between them. So we are sparse on what we request right now.
Would you recommend that we, that we need to go as far as what Hanover does, or do you think that that's not needed to go that far, or what would be your recommendation?
There could be some in between, or you could go as far as what Hanover is requesting.
What I presented to you all last time was, we, we have for trees, we have per 50 feet, and for shrubs, per 30 feet. When you put all that together, you end up with two trees and three shrubs and 100 feet. So what I did was break it down, instead of working at 50 feet and 30 feet, looking at 100 foot frontage and how many, and I, I added more shrub, more trees and more shrubs. But still not, not a lot of trees and shrubs, just, shrubs just help improve the understory.
So are there any differences in the types of, of project? I'm just thinking, some of these, the more you plant, the more you shield that business from visibility from the highway, which is why a lot of people want to be on the highway to have some visibility. Now certainly, if it's, if it's a certain type of business, not having visibility is not as important, but if it's, if it is a, a drugstore, you know, do we want that shielded?
Because their shrubs are pretty low, all, all the shrubbery they had was low, so they still had the visibility.
But it, they did not have, have any trees, just shrubs?
They had the trees, but the trees were planted so that they still had visibility. So they ran the manor so that you could still, their signs, their buildings, there was still the visibility, so the canopy was climbed up so that you could still see the building. And I think Mr. Wagner would touch to that, that there wasn't any shielding of the business whatsoever.
Hey, this is, this is what we can, that's called, which is, this is what we're here now. That's what I would say. And I think, yeah, the thing I was too, that nothing is going to leave it a little more better look to the car.
Are there, are there any other things that you've seen in your years doing this that will beautify, if you will, the road frontage, other than trees or shrubs? Is there any other methods people have used, something that maybe requires less maintenance, or is there anything else out there like that that you've seen?
Along the whole corridor you were going to, or, well, I think they kind of put that into the comp plan, and there's a, the gateway into the county, I mean, that's your visibility into the county. Along the corridor, you, you want your whole corridor to kind of be consistent with your businesses, because that's what people see coming in and out of King William. So you want it to be consistent with your new businesses. When you have, you know, landscaping that's sparse, people are going to notice that, coming in and out of King William. And I noticed it coming in and out of the county. It looks more amenable to anyone that's traveling, going up and down 360, they're going to want to stop. When it looks like, you know, this county is giving up with the landscaping, they're maintaining the visibility along the corridor, that's something that attacks people. So I would say, you know, you want to increase the visibility along your main corridor. It's the gateway, it's also all of your businesses. It's not one business, maybe you can get your community involved, which is part of the, the comp plan, trying to get the community involved, but it starts with, when your businesses coming in, making sure that we get their landscaping installed. It's going to start somewhere.
Other than trees and shrubs, Hanover does allow a, a three-foot berm, of course, frontage. And with the three-foot berm, the planning is a little less, I believe. But other than that, now between, between a business and a residential area, you've got a, what do you call that, a buffer? And the buffer can have different types of, like a fence, so, trees are required to be everything in summer, two rows of everything, seven, seven feet apart of them, that's the buffer.
And I am, I am in favor of the berm, I've seen that done a lot, and it, it does two things, it protects the business from the traffic, as well as provides a buffer. Again, if you've got trees planted within that, that mound, that, that tends to look good.
And that could be put as a part of our, an allowable part, not, not, not necessarily requirement.
I don't believe, and it's not in there at all, is it? There's no references to a berm anywhere.
Not at all, right.
And, and I think the, the only berm I know of in the county, and you will know where I'm talking about, is at the standing gravel plane up 600, they have a berm with trees planted, and it looks nice.
I'm in favor of adding that into the ordinance, if everybody in agreement on that, adding a berm, this is acceptable. Do you have? Can I sit in here? Can you see how Hanover describes their berm ordinance? See if their definition would be something that we could adopt or modify, to our liking?
I showed it on the third page of their diagrams, that's a berm, with all the elevations, but it just doesn't say berm.
Yeah, I'm looking through there.
The first one is just flat, 100 foot. Now, it's 100 foot, 205 foot, that foot burns. Oh, it does say berm, just doesn't have any numbers.
It does say, you know, that if they, if there's, if there are plants installed on a berm, they, they can use smaller plants, minimum height, for, I don't know if that's the only. There you go, section 26, 264, this is, when the buffer includes undulating berms, the berm shall have a minimum height of three feet, and a gradient of no more than three to one, no berm shall be located within the site distance triangle at each entrance. No berm shall be located within the site distance triangle at each entrance." To the site. Where such burns are provided, there shall be a 50% reduction in the number of required trees within thoroughfare buffer with such credit being calculated at the rate of 200 square feet of canopy per tree, as shown in the county tree canopy chart. Shrubbery shall be provided according to the requirements specified above. So there is a desperate line in there for that. What are your thoughts on that definition? That's something that we should add, something along those lines, Christina. Very good with adding that to the just take what Hanover has there. Does anybody add anything different that they would propose? That works.
Recommend them to Hanover or what Mr. Wagner presented a lot to you.
No, just the berm, just the berm, yeah. Any other changes you all see? You could don't see. Anybody have anything else to add before we move to the next item on the agenda? All right, moving on, new business. Somebody have new business to report on?
You told us what that new building, is it a family dollar, Dollar General, Dollar Tree, combination of two? Dollar General, okay. Doesn't have a sign.
What is our completion date on that? Is it still July? Okay.
What?
Okay.
Oh, my gosh.
I don't remember the exact date.
And they are still on track for that?
I don't say they're on track.
Okay.
That's definitely their goal.
All right.
Unless I got it, just because my instructions right now.
Oh, I do have one, Mr. Chairman. There's a question. I saw a big orange sign on one of the things in the hall. Did one of the new companies get shut down? They had put up all the signs and they were putting stuff inside where the dome that place was. And then they were putting a hall door. Did they not meet their requirements or meet their building permits or something in the mall?
They're just going through the process to get that permit.
Oh, and they started without it? Another thing was that place that gets done, and I were talking about a couple meetings back, that lot that was next to the Abbott truck thing where they keep, and they keep putting more and more dirt now. It's got the ravine where water goes in, but the sides are now really high. You said that's an addition of the truck lot, maybe to park more trucks or?
I think that's what, I believe that's what we talked about, an addition to the Abbott.
Oh, okay. That seems.
Anything else? All right. Moving on, staff and special committee reports. I believe Mr. Ashcraft has a planning and zoning six-month work plan he's going to present to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back us up just a little bit. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present this document to you. First of all, Mr. Chairman, I want to congratulate you for your election to the chairman. That it's on a position to be taken lightly. And Ms. Wagner, you as well, in the vice chair position. We certainly pledge this staff as we have every meeting that I've been here in all the past years. We want to make this commission be as fully functional as we can. And Mr. Cullen, welcome to the arena and your input is certainly appreciated. All of you have had some dealings with business or any kind of leadership role. You know, there's a thousand models out there. One thing that has worked in my career, I believe, to be successful has been keeping it pretty simple. I ask, beginning in July, I ask every department that reports to me to compile a list of goals and objectives that they would like to achieve in the next six months. The goals are taken from various areas. Could be the comp plan, could be the budget, could be utilities, it could be recreation. It could be anything that policymakers such as yourselves have established as priorities. And we take those kind items and we put them throughout each of the departments. And that is their work plan for the next six months. It doesn't interfere with the day-to-day. You're not going to find day-to-day things in this plan. They're new things, they're new goals, they're revisions. And you've already started on a huge one that is not listed on the plan because it started before July, but that's the subdivision zone plan. And it'll work its way through the system. So what I have to just go over briefly with you this evening, and I believe you have a copy in front of you, is the planning and zoning staff goals. We met with Ms. Graham. Steve Hudgens and myself met with Ms. Graham. We went over what she thought were the priorities for the next six months. I know she got a lot of input from the area of zoning and throughout. And as I said before, none of these are earth shaking, but they're all important. And if she accomplishes her plan and we intermingle her plan with the rest of the plans, then we're going to be able to look back in six months and say, hey, we've accomplished a lot in this government. And when you do that for a period of years, it's remarkable what you will have achieved. And it all comes with everybody coming together. So the board of supervisors looked this over. It wasn't anything they had to vote on because this is an administrative document, but I've not heard any feedback to the negative. Mr. Greenwood, I don't know if you have anything or a thing you want to add here this evening. But from the planning and zoning perspective, as we just mentioned, the zoning, the subdivision ordinance, it's good that you're addressing things that I've heard in a large way in just the six or seven months that I've been your county administrator. And when the board of supervisors, you have an opportunity to join your thoughts and then ultimately it'll go to changes. It'll show you that a document can always be made better. And I think you're on the track to make it better. And of course, by making that document better, you're inviting visitors and people who want to make investments in the county, whether they live here or they're looking at you from the outside, that there's energy there. That's places where we want to do business. And in my experience is when you make landscaping requirements and when you establish other boundaries in which people can operate under, they don't mind that because they know the rules. They know the constituency in which they're coming to serve. And I think you're going to find a much smoother relationship with community development and economic development together. So anyway, real quickly, as I look through the plan, we know the effort that was put in to establish the comprehensive plan. And the plan is a guide, it's a model. Anybody can look at it, some will like it, some will say it's missing some things. But I think as a whole, it's a good roadmap for the county. It creates discussion and ultimately I think that it will create activity within the community. And the two things that Cherry had pointed out that she thought we should be working on is the cluster subdivision, update that. And then the use and reference future land use map, which I think was referenced here this evening. And all of that will encourage growth in the areas in which we want to encourage growth. One area that's been, and Christine and I talked about this with Steve a little bit this morning, we want to get better with the permitting process. We know that anybody that comes in for a permit wants it as soon as they can get it. And there's nothing wrong with that, that's expected. But I think there have been gaps in our delivery of those permits that we are trying to work through. And it's not just been in the staff area. You know, as you know, there's external partners that have to participate in the permitting process. So about a couple, the health department is one, the VDOT is another. And we're trying to combine and talk and communicate better so that when permits require the time spent that they can be given in 24, 48 hours, you know, then we ought to be doing that. If it's something that meets those requirements. And obviously if it's something as sophisticated as a subdivision or a huge development or whatever it might be, or a huge, you know, building project, then it's going to take a little longer, it's going to take a little more putting all that together. But this is a priority in this six months to get better at that. Not to hurry to the point where we're making mistakes or that we're allowing people to not have to go through the thorough review. But we want to get better at making sure that we get that permit out to people so that they can begin to do the business in which they want to invest in this county. Because I don't have to tell you, when they go to work, people have jobs, payrolls are being met. Hopefully what they're constructing is something that the community wants, whether it's a house, whether it's a business, whether it's a store, I mean, whatever it might be. So, you know, two of the things that she's pointed out here is certainly to look at possibly same day. It's, yeah, it might be a little aggressive, but I know some communities do it. And we're going to see if we can get to that point. And also a checklist for obtaining permits that are related to cups and variances and rezonies and so forth. So your input into that as time goes on, we'd like to hear how we're doing. I know all of you talked to the development community. You know, we want to get better. And that's a main, that's a really big one in this whole list. You mentioned landscaping just earlier. To me, a compliment to any landscaping that is invested is what is your property maintenance ordinance saying? Because if we as a community allow property maintenance to be lax, then again, that is not something that is good for the community. That puts an impression upon the community that, well, we're just going to, we're just, we're not going to pay attention to the things that are, that need to either be torn down, upgraded, you know, whatever it might be. You know, we don't want to touch the historic district and all that that goes into that. We certainly want to respect the farmlands that's out there and the buildings that are on that. But when you're talking about the main corridors, which is 30 and 360, and we all know that, we've been working hard to try to make property maintenance a priority without having that hammer. We don't take anybody to court, that's not our goal. But we do want to encourage them, especially if they're absentee landlords, as we say, absentee landowners, that we can do a better job. And I think you have a property maintenance report that Christina and Barbara have given you. You can see that we're plugging along, you know, and that will be a priority. Whenever somebody does have a project, they want to know what their status is. They want to know when that review's coming. They want to know when the next inspection's coming. What's the next step? Whether it be to this body to rezone or after that's all completed, we start building something. There's nothing more frustrated, frustrating than to get to a point where you have to wait for the bureaucracy to catch up with what you have to do. And I'm proud right now of our building, our maintenance and inspection group. For only two people, most of the time, they're doing a great job. And if you look through your reports and see the number of inspections that are being made, I believe I reported to the board of supervisors the other night, 1,700 inspections in five months. That's pretty aggressive for a couple people. And I know we borrow in every now and then, I think, to help us as well. So that's something we want to continue to push hard on so that the public does not have to wait whenever there is something, whenever something's ready, we're there for them. Our GIS system took a vacation. Over the last year, with all the things that had to be done in the county, we haven't kept up with adding additional layers to the GIS system. We contract with Timmons Group to do that for us. It'd be nice to get to a point someday where we have a GIS person or two that would just do nothing but work on that. And believe me, there's enough work for that. You're always adding layers and you're always adding properties and you're always doing this and that. But we will, at the end of this six-month period, add a flood zone utility. And then two that's not on your list, the Chesbys preservation. And then Steve came up with it today that he thinks soil layers are very important too. Letting people know what kind of soil we have. I don't think we have a shrink swell problem in the county, but if there's an area that we do, I think people have a right to be able to see that. So those are a couple, those are four areas that we want to increase our GIS presence. And as well was continue to update the other layers that we have. Lots been said about Commerce Park. We know the owner wants to sell the remaining lots. We know that there's interest in selling the remaining lots. Nothing's come forward yet. The county is, has, you know, the board has expressed, and the EDA as well has expressed to me that they have energy to try to make that park be whatever it was supposed to be when it was established. It really is, even despite itself, it's a vibrant location. There's a lot of activity down there. It's a hodgepodge of businesses. I don't think there's really an arrangement or a theme, but yet people's working there, taxes are being paid, we just have a responsibility to complete it. So Cherry is working with DEQ, VDOT and just other development people to give us some firm estimates on what it would cost to live up to the potential of that area. And we hope to have that information pretty quickly because I know we've been asked for that. Well, if we buy them, what's it take to finish it? We don't have that number yet. I know there was a study done a year, a few years ago. It certainly isn't, it couldn't be dated, the numbers can't be right. So we're going to try to get you in full compliance with some good numbers. We've established a new partnership with the New Circuit Clerk. She has agreed to give us timely notifications when transactions come in. And the reason that is so important is because we can begin to make contacts. We can begin to have relationships. We can begin to have relationships with people that are typically, typically buying big tracts of land. And we, it usually says, you know, what the price was, where the land is, what they might be going to do with it. And we can jump on that. So that they see that we're open for, we're friendly. We're not just going to sit back and, you know, they'll want you to sit back and just wait. If you're ready to move forward, we want to be aggressive in, in helping you to do that. So, uh, we just got our first, uh, group, group, I think this last, uh, this last weekend in the corner of, uh, of 30 and 360, uh, there were, I think many of you remember Burger King was supposed to go. Well, uh, you know, that property was, was just bought for $3.6 million, I believe. A little less than three acres, I think is what it, it showed on the, on the list. We mentioned property maintenance again, and that's keeping, uh, projects moving. We can identify when things are out of compliance. And we can write letters and we can encourage, but we want to, we want to get to a point where if people aren't going to satisfy the, uh, the theme of the ordinance, then we have no choice but to make that happen. And I don't, again, nobody wants to have a hammer in our hand and make things uncomfortable for folks. But we do want to, we do want to make sure that they're not ignoring us. And again, that's, uh, that's really a shot at absentee land, uh, landowners more than these people that are, that are here in the, in the county. Number nine is actually already submitted. Uh, the Commonwealth Transportation Board received our smart scale projects, uh, just at the last board meeting. And, uh, I believe, um, they will be considering them this fall with three of them. And hopefully we'll get one of the three. Any one of those three or two or three or three of three will make a huge difference because we'll be getting some, some transportation dollars to, uh, to do it. So we hope that'll work out. And then one thing you would find in all the plans that we have for this next, uh, six months, we want every one of our employees to begin thinking about making themselves better, self-improvement, both as a career and an individual, um, uh, talent. And we're starting out with six hours of professional training in this six month, or excuse me, over the next 12 months. So we're asking them to do three months or, or three, uh, hours in this six month period. And then maybe three hours in the next six month period. But we'll be getting, we'll be making that larger as the years go by. We're trying to get them to start thinking that when you come to work here, that's not where it stops. Matter of fact, that's where it should begin. And we feel like that, uh, we have some great people that need some motivation because they've been allowed, or maybe the budget has hindered them. Whatever the reason is, the excuses are over. We're ready to make everybody better. And then you've already started this process for us. You've talked a lot about Hanover County tonight. Well, we're asking every department to visit another locality to discuss whatever, uh, best practices might exist in the particular locality they go to. We're not picking all the big ones, you know, our peers. But, you know, one thing that about government is you can plagiarize and you can do it without embarrassment. Because best practices is what everybody shares. And you take a little bit of what people are doing sometimes and you apply it to your area. And then you'd be surprised how many then begin to look at what we're doing and apply it to, to their area. That's the way it works. There's nothing, there's, there's very little new in the government, uh, in the government setting. It's just making it better and continually to evolve. So. So that's, that's your work plan. That's what you'll find your department doing. Not all of it applies to you as a, as a commission, but I think a lot of it will be important to you as you see the result. Because you see more and more people coming before you asking for things. These kind of things are going to make the improvements that sets the table for them. So I'm, I'm open to any questions they might have.
No questions, but I very much appreciate you sharing the information with us and think that, um, everything that you're putting in place, um, make it a definite worth.
Thank you very much. And good luck to you as you, as you continue your delivery.
I do have something.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and thank you for this, um, for this here, you know, when, when we were going through the comprehensive plan and we had surveys coming back. When we asked ourselves, is King William open for business? It was kind of a difficult question to answer. Here you have 11 points that scream out that King William is open for your business. And I thank you for that. I think it gives us clear direction, uh, from a planning and zoning, um, perspective. And gives us a, a little bit of a comprehensive plan of sorts to, to go by here. So, um, a couple of questions, um, just for, uh, the Timmons group that you mentioned. So that is an outsourced company that we use. Did you say that we could do that in-house?
Eventually.
Eventually.
Uh, it would require, it would require a full-time position. And, uh, we have, we're doing a lot of catching up in the I P area. One area is in the area of cybersecurity. The rest is just getting our systems in place, uh, and so that it all starts making sense when, uh, when we do get broadband coming through here later, uh, starting later, uh, this year. But I think at some point we need, uh, to, uh, to have a, uh, a person that's right down the hall that will be right on top of it. You don't have to, to spend them consulting rates. But right now, Timmons is kind of the, they're the group that does it for many localities throughout the, throughout Virginia. And, uh, we're happy with them right now. But eventually we want to get to in-house.
I would assume that in-house would also get significant cost savings as well in the long run?
Well, what we're paying Timmons now is probably, uh, the cost of, of, uh, of, well, not quite the cost of a position. But at the same time, that's all we have them to do. So we don't, we don't contract with them when they're, when they're not doing G I S. So we want to make sure that we have enough work for someone to do eventually. And I think we're going to get there. The county has no choice but to produce that because you can just see uh, all the dynamics that are kind of circling around as we put all this together, it's going to be necessary.
The Commerce Park, you mentioned that you're looking to get some numbers back on what that would take to, to take control of it and, and bring it up to speed. Is there, has there been any discussion regarding like a joint private venture, um, of, you know, partnering with a, a private entity or developer that would be?
That would be the, that would be the ideal thing to do. There's been discussion about the county going in and as being that, that group that fixes it up and makes it happen. I don't know the real feeling of the board of supervisors yet because we haven't had a chance to discuss numbers. I know the E D A, uh, has, has talked about it a little bit as well. I think if we can get a good initiative out there, and we have, we have one, uh, one developer that's already, uh, expressed some interest and, uh, we're trying to work with the, with the property owner to satisfy that. That individual does not want to sell the lots individually. He wants to sell the rest of the lots to the group. So if we can get either way, if that to happen, we could be on our way, uh, to some success. But there's also been a number of, of code ordinance violations related to property maintenance that has, that has occurred down there. And we're trying to, we're trying to also straighten that out as we, as we begin to market, uh, you know, the property. And I think we're moving in that direction. But again, we want to give people a chance to comply. But there was a lot of issues in there that we're trying to, trying to overcome.
Thank you for your question. I actually have a question in regards to that. So the, the, the park that we're speaking of, to, to get it into compliance, if you will, you've got water, sewer, and I believe there's some VDOT issues in there as well.
That's correct. And well, the, if you're counting water and sewers, the, the U Q, yeah, we got stormwater.
And I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of a dozen lots in there. Okay. So if, if, if the county makes the investment to go in there with water, sewer, works with VDOT to, to get the roads up, which someone's going to have to pay for that, what is, what's, what's the end game? What's the proposed return on the county's investment there?
Well, obviously the lots would, the lots would be sold out. Taxes, jobs. I think, uh, I think it will begin to, what I've seen of, of the, of the park, uh, it would begin to, to unify all the businesses down there rather than being separate. You know, you could establish a, you know, an association and what advertising would be standardized and you know, there's, there's a lot of, I think a lot of upside to that. And it may take a while to get those, uh, you know, as they say, the return back, but I think it would happen eventually.
So if we were to extend the water sewer to the park, I always say I want to be in the middle, not on the end, because then you reap the benefits of being in the middle. Would, would the plan be with water sewer to have it where it could be tapped into for everybody in between?
Absolutely.
Now, where it's going.
Absolutely.
Because a lot of our current water and sewer was not designed that way.
Right. Water, water is probably ahead of sewer right now. But, uh, we're looking for sewer to catch up. With the water tank, the new water tank that's going to be started this year, that's, that's going to go right down to the park.
So, so a lot of the, the question back to the return on the investment, getting there and, and getting that kind of on the tax roll, generating some tax dollars, creating some employment, the, the other positive would be there's a lot of parcels between here and there that then would have, would have water and sewer.
That's correct.
Um, and I guess my last question that I, I don't know the answer to, do you know the availability, uh, of three-phase power? Is that available in the, in that park? Because that is huge to, Mr. Hart, like saying it is there?
Yeah, okay.
Because that, that's huge.
It is.
And, and
It is.
Dominion is tens of thousands of dollars per foot to run three-phase power. So if that's already there, that would certainly be a plus.
I don't think there's any gas there though, I believe. Is that correct? I don't think there's any actual water. Is it on that side though? Oh, okay. Good, good, good questions. Thank you. Thank you everybody, appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
Next item on the agenda, Edmonds reports, violation logs, Christine, the deep. Everything in particular news or?
It's the reports for the month of June. So you have your standard, uh, permanent equity reports by summit numbers and not the actual applications that have been taken in, but the actual, um, ones that been either approved and denied, that have been assigned summit numbers. Most of you are aware, I was actually attending the trial, so I was on the last meeting. So I was out there for a week presenting training. And so it's, it is a slightly less number than what you're used to seeing. They have that, then you have, uh, a little bit different view that you're used to seeing. So the invoice listing by service ID, or if you actually can see them by the fees that were actually paid. So that is the ones that show, um, when they were actually paid. And then you have the customized, um, one that shows a lot more detailed information on the permits that were actually issued. That shows you the description when they were issued, um, the type of permits for the month of June. Then you have the planning report for the month of June that shows the planning applications that came in by lot line adjustment, subdivisions, site plans, exempt subdivisions, boundary surveys, um, C P's, rezoning, wetlands boards, W Q I E, and so that's all for the month of June. Then you have the new view that you all saw last month, and I wasn't able to explain, um, the ocean property maintenance inspection report. So this is something that's compiled outside of Edmunds, and that's a manual process to give you a breakdown by residential properties, by commercial properties. And it breaks it down by each individual action that's transpired on that property. So it breaks it down by the most recent, um, going backwards. So you'll see it, uh, I'm sorry, actually from, actually opposite. But it gives you a complete history of what we have done on that property. And once it is completely closed out, it does come off of this report. So the ones you're seeing are the ones that are still under action, um, and this dates back to January of this year. So this is all the properties that we have right now, um, that have some type of enforcement. There is one and that we do have to go back out. Barbara wrote that this morning for me and told me that, uh, that it's been actually completed, that I need to take off of the report since I ran it. So this is a completely different view than you're used to seeing. So I just wanted to kind of explain it a little bit. So that's why it seems, uh, more involved is just because it gives a complete history. So when it came out of Edmunds, it was a little bit confusing. Um, and it wasn't broken down by residential or commercial. And then on the very backside of it, you'll see, uh, Daddy gave me the building department report for January through June. So that just breaks it down by their number of permits that were issued. And this is building all of the trade permits, their inspections, and their commercial permits, new dwellings, the C O's, and their plant reviews.
Thank you. And you said that you were telling me earlier that the July 20th joint meeting with the board of supervisors was originally for the 18th.
Correct, and that's at 17 p.m.
So this is a change, um, so July 20th, which is a Wednesday.
That or Wednesday.
And you said that Renee Robinson from Habitat for Humanity will be there to present as well, correct?
Yes, she's going to provide a presentation on affordable housing.
Anybody have any?
If I could ask one question, um, you said as far as the violation logs, once they, um, resolve the issues that they would follow the report, would it be possible to have, um, when it gets resolved, that to be included in the report and then drop off after that so we can see what happened or what transpired for resolution? And then drop off in the next month? Would that cause you too much problems to be able to do?
I could do it for you all. It would be a separate report that I'd do for the board.
I don't want to cause any, I don't want to cause any additional work for you to have to do, Christine. I just, you know, when it gets resolved, I'm kind of just entrusted to see, you know, that what actions were taken and, and when it, you know, finalized. Thank you.
All right, um, last thing, commissioner comments. Uh, I'll start with Ms. Height, ladies first.
Well, first of all, thank you to those who come out, um, and those who dial in. Um, I also wanted to take an opportunity, um, to say thank you to Mr. John Breeden, who served our community for many years as part of the planning commission. During this time, he served many leadership roles and on several subcommittees and provided valuable input, focus, and dedication to our successful updating of both the subdivision zoning ordinance as well as the county comprehensive plan. It has been my sincere pleasure in working with John over the many years and would encourage him to continue providing feedback in the future. I would also like to encourage the planning commission to include Mr. Breeden in subcommittees in the future to assist with updates to the zoning ordinance, comp plans, and other important matters where his knowledge, advice, um, would be extremely beneficial.
Thank you, Ms. Height. Uh, Mr. Greenwood?
Thank you for coming. It seems a little sparser than usual, but I guess it's right after a holiday, many people are still getting over all that, getting back to work.
Thank John Breedenvall, his years of service and his leadership, uh, has
I'd like to thank John Breedenville, his years of service and his leadership, uh, as Ms. Height said. But we must move on. So in that regard, I welcome this fellow. I look forward to working with him. And I must say that, uh, certainly made a good move in nominating Mr. Sluter as chair. He continues to do an excellent job and he's shown that he can handle the job here. So thank you.
I'd like to echo what everyone else has said here tonight. One thing I would like to add, um, is just having been on the, the other side for so many years for the first time. Probably since I've been in business, having Mr. Ashcraft here has made me feel positive about the future of King William and what direction we're going. Somebody that actually has a plan, whether you agree with it all or not, we finally have somebody with a plan who, who's trying to put the plan in place and, and move us forward. And I think by, by unifying not only the planning commission, but the board of supervisors with the, the offices here. Maybe we can get a clear vision of where we'd like to see this county in five years, ten years, twenty years. So we can all work together for that common goal because we have not had that, in my opinion, in, in several, several years.
Yeah, I echo the, um, the, these, uh, comments as well and, and, you know, the, it's, it's really, really awesome to see a plan coming together and, and having a, a vision and hope for the future uh, set right before us here. Um, there's a lot to look forward to within our county. And with that being said, uh, John Breeden's, um, thumbprint is on so much of the legwork that was put into the comprehensive plan, the, uh, draft ordinance, uh, future land use map. It's so many things that his, um, his service on the planning commission has, um, you know, under his, under his leadership, just in the past year, we've made, uh, huge strides. Um, and, um, certainly I know me personally, I'm thankful for his leadership and his service on the commission. And, um, and I also want to welcome Mr. Kellum as well to the, to the, um, commission. And, and we are looking forward to, um, to the insight that he's going to bring to the table. So if there's nothing else, then we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.